If you haven't noticed, there's coffee, water, and cookies in the back. Help yourself. I want them all gone by the time we clean up.
I see you got your 35 millimeter.
Yeah.
This actually takes really good pictures. It has a lot of megapixels.
I know.
12 megapixels now? Is that a iPhone? Nina, here. He wants the posed shots.
I want the poly shots. He doesn't like those.
This is for history.
I hate to make you wait, but since I posted at 6 o'clock, I think I better wait till 6. Yeah. If you could turn off your phone, put it on vibrate or whatever, so it doesn't make noise. Thank you. Don't ever watch a clock countdown. Well.
Welcome to the city of Signal Hill. I'm Lyary Forrester, currently serving as Vice Mayor of the city. This is our candidate forum, but it's sponsored by the Signal Tribune. I'm here just to introduce some people. First of all, I want to introduce our moderator, Nina Strickhart. Our timekeeper, Jane Fallon. Now, I want to introduce two candidates that are running unopposed. Carmen Brooks, who's running for city clerk. Carmen, could you stand up, please? And Dave Hopper, who's running for city treasurer. And with that, I'm going to turn it over for introductions of the candidates. To Nina Strickhart.
And our candidates this evening, number one is in number one position. Only up there. Kier Jones, second is Chris Wilson, and Tina Hanson is third. And the reason that I'm giving numbers is that the questions that are going to be asked, and there are five, it'll be asked of each person, but I'm going to do it and alternate it, so it'll go to the first, second, and third, and then it'll go second, third, first, and I'm not going to keep saying more. We're going to... What is that?
They said you can count.
Yeah, I can count. They say. We're going to have three minutes for opening remarks. We're going to have five questions, same for each candidate, and there will be three minutes to answer. Well, okay. Okay, well, then there we have it. Okay, we have two different deals. And then each candidate, we have two minutes for closing remarks. And then, if there is time, we will have... Each candidate will be allowed to ask one question of one of the other candidates, and that candidate will have three minutes to answer. Anyone have any questions? Because I do. Okay, so the first question will go to Kier Jones, and that is...
Do you like us to do our opening remarks first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely. Please do. Well, that was gonna... Yeah, absolutely. Please do.
And I... I'm sorry, I have another question. If we have extra time and the other candidates want to ask the question asked by one of us, are they allowed to do that?
We hadn't really spoken about that. What is the consensus with you folks?
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, then so it shall be. Okay, Mr. Jones.
All right, good evening. My name is Kier Jones, and I'm running for city council because I've moved here 10 years ago. I'm a homeowner. And through that whole process, I've learned to listen to my neighbors. And I've become more and more engaged in our city through those years. I'm also a small business owner. I've been involved with the Signal Hill Chamber of Commerce for 10 years. I have used that experience to learn more and more about our city and become more engaged with the residents and the businesses that operate here. And then I became more of a volunteer until... And most recently, I'm the president of the Signal Hill Community Foundation. So we work on the concerts in the park, as well as the million-dollar endowment we're working on for our new library for its continued success. And last, I'm serving as the city clerk of Signal Hill. And through that role, I've been working on voter engagement. We had our highest turnout in election last year in November of over 60% of registered voters participating. And I also worked on the measure coming out on this ballot to increase voter turnout by moving the primary to... the election to the primary in March, or to the general election in November. So, as a member of Signal Hill City Council, my goal is to continue to work on an economic development plan for everyone. A master plan for future growth incorporating the needs of the city along with the needs of the residents. I think it's important that we have a healthy environment, creating more park and open space. And I think it's important to protect our public safety officials, making sure they have enough resources to get their jobs done, and they have new technologies so that they can continue to improve. And lastly, I think it's important that we have a 21st century city hall. 24/7 access to services, transparency, and increasing Wi-Fi availability in public spaces and taking advantage of 5G technologies as they come. So, I'm not... You know, I didn't prepare a giant speech. My major focus, as I've been a leader throughout the years, is listening to those around me and creating a plan together so that we all can create the future that we're looking for. And I don't want to leave anyone behind in that process. So, as I've gone door-knocking, I've been listening. I've been following up with folks because a lot of the things that people are wondering about, we're already doing in our great city. We just need to connect people and continue the communication so people know what's available. And then, the next step is creating a future that we can all look forward to. And so, in my role as a city council member, I hope to create that plan and that vision that we can all rally around so that we take Signal Hill to the future. And it's a place that we can all be proud of, and it's recognized as the gleaming beacon on top of the hill. So, remember on March 5th, Kier Jones for city council. And Jane, you did a great job with the timing.
I forgot to mention to the audience, Jane is the timekeeper. So she has cards that will say three minutes to begin, two minutes, one minute.
Same, whichever.
Whichever. One minute and 30 seconds. And then she's got a bell to stop them.
And then I've got a bell to stop them if that doesn't stop them.
If they're still talking. So, thank you.
It's all... We're all good. Chris, would you do your opening remarks, please?
Thank you. My name is Chris Wilson, and I have the honor to serve as a candidate for the office of city council in Signal Hill. I am a Signal Hill resident and proud community leader. In 2002, I began my work with the City Peak River Parks Recreation Department, and then for the Wider Union High School District as a vocational specialist working with adults with disabilities such as autism. My journey began in 2008, working for then Assemblymember Bonnie Lomenthal as her Signal Hill field representative. From 2008 to 2014, I worked to collaborate with the likes of the Signal Hill Chamber of Commerce on small business workshops and seminars, listened to the economic needs of the community, and assisted Signal Hill residents with casework involving state-related matters. In 2014, I moved to Signal Hill where I created the first-ever Signal Hill North Neighborhood Association, the only one of its kind in the city today, with the focus on neighbor-to-neighbor relationships, bridging the communication between law enforcement and the community, and hosting special guest speakers like city staff and the American Red Cross, focusing on emergency management, disaster preparedness, and mapping your neighborhood. I was then appointed to the city's planning commission, and during my tenure, I voted for the development of Mother's Market and Kitchen, the first one in LA County, supported extending economic benefits to small businesses like Ten Mile Brewery, and voted to change for a zoning change from commercial to open space to make way for the city's first dog park. I'm a proud member of the Signal Hill Police Foundation, board advisor to the Regional Inspector Chamber of Commerce, and district director to California Assemblymember Mike Gibson. I'm running for Signal Hill City Council because I see an opportunity in our city. I believe that our best days are ahead of us. I believe that we have done big things in the city, like put million-dollar homes on the hill, a row of prominent dealerships in the heart of the city, and built a world-class police station powered by solar. We are here because we thought big. I want to think bigger. I am a fresh face with a new perspective. I'm running because I want to build on the economic progress in Signal Hill while bringing my 10 years of government experience and futuristic thinking to the city council. I'm running to make sure our businesses have the economic tools that they need. I'm running because I want to reimagine the... rebrand the image of our city to a 21st century economy. I'm running because I believe in the values, leadership, and courage of our city's staff, residents, and community leaders. I'm running because I see a future in Signal Hill. I'm running because I want to bring people together with an agenda that embraces the diversity of our community, ensures everyone benefits from the city's growth, invests in the future of our youth, and lifts every voice. I'm running because I believe we can move this city forward together. Thank you.
It's okay to applaud. You guys can applaud.
And Tina Hanson, please.
Thank you. Let me know when you start.
Okay. My name is Tina Hanson, and I'm here to ask for your vote to reelect me to the Signal Hill City Council. I want to begin by thanking the Signal Tribune newspaper for sponsoring this candidate's forum. I also want to thank those in attendance, as well as those watching on cable. I have lived in the city of Signal Hill since 1991, and I have owned property in the city since the 1990s. I have been a prosecutor with the County of Los Angeles District Attorney's Office for 33 years, and I currently work in the Environmental Crimes Division. I have been married for 32 years, and we are raising our 14-year-old twins in Signal Hill. I've been a member of the Signal Hill City Council since 1994, and I can tell you, the Signal Hill of 1994 is completely different from the Signal Hill of 2019. Since I've been on the city council, there has been significant residential development, which started with the Hilltop Development, and which has now spread all over the city. We have $1 million homes, and we also have beautiful workforce housing such as Las Briesas and Zinnia. There has been significant commercial development during my years on council as well. And commercial development is essential because it brings in tax revenue, which then funds our city services. During the years I have been on the council, much has been added to our park and recreation program, such as the addition of active parks, destination parks, and art pieces. The dog park on the north side of town, the trail system, panorama promenade with exercise stations, and a project that has become personally important to me over the years, the construction of a new 12,000-square-foot library, which will have the most up-to-date technology available, as well as provide a showcase of the history which makes our city so unique and special. When I think about all of the work I have been involved in during my years on the council, I also know that my interest and belief in the importance of community services drove many of these projects. I am 100% committed to workforce housing. I advocated for public art in our parks and have been part of every art selection committee. I suggested the exercise stations at Promenade so that physical fitness is accessible to everyone, regardless of cost. I asked the city to develop a digital newsletter. And as mayor, I have opened up a small business spotlight during our city council meetings. I have been a wise steward of our city's finances, and our city continues to be in top form financially with significant reserves. As a prosecutor, I understand public safety, and our city continues to fund our police department, which is at 45% of our total general fund budget. I voted to bring in the Los Angeles County Fire Department into our city. I have also been on the council during major infrastructure projects, such as the construction of two water reservoirs at the top of the hill, Cherry Avenue and Spring Street widening.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
All right, we will start with our first question, and we will start with Kier Jones. I'll let you get it ready.
You could have done the stopwatch on the phone, too.
I'm not... I'm just the reader.
I know.
When it comes to our residents' protection, in your opinion, in what areas could the city improve overall public safety, and how could that be achieved?
I think a lot of... We have a great police department, first and foremost, and the city utilizes 45% of its budget to support our police department. We're all members of the Police Foundation. You buy your ticket to Terry's event, and you too will be a member. And I feel like all of our involvement with the police department really requires us communicating and letting residents know how to utilize the police department. And so, I think for me, the way to improve our public safety in Signal Hill is connecting our residents with the resources that we have. So improving the communication lines, helping people understand who to call when they need help, understanding the resources outside of Signal Hill that we have available for the homeless community and those of a need. And a lot of that has to do with the educational and communication component. And so, I would advocate increasing... Improving that aspect of it.
Thank you. Chris?
So, this...
Okay.
No, it's much easier.
I'm ready. Okay. So, this is one of my priorities, and I'm very happy that I have the support of the LA County firefighters. That represents Signal Hill, and also paramedics, too. I'm the only candidate that has the support of firefighters. Look, my five-pronged approach involves public safety as a candidate. I want to make sure I work to maintain fast emergency response times, along with making sure that we continue to adequately staff police and firefighter levels. And I think that the current city council's done an amazing job in making sure that, you know, the police is fully staffed and that we are great partners with LA County. But we need to make sure that we take a lot of the technology services that are available in the city through our application, our Signal Hill app or whatnot, to be able to connect neighbors and police. One of my initiatives is to create an ongoing and consistent block captains roundtable to further enhance communication between community police. Making sure that we have a neighbor-to-neighbor relationship with law enforcement is very, very key. And that's the reason why I've been president of the Signal Hill Police... I'm sorry, president of the Signal Hill North Neighborhood Association since 2014. Because I've done that, and I've built those relationships in the north side, which has often been known as the forgotten area. So, as a city council member, I look forward to doing the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
It's really okay to clap. You guys can clap.
Okay, ready? Okay, would you like me to repeat the question, or you're good to go?
I'm good.
Okay.
So, I want to say that we took a very huge step toward protecting our public safety overall when we opened our new police station. And that's something that I was proud to be part of as a member of the city council. I also sat on the Blue Ribbon Committee when we talked about whether we needed a new police station. Yes, they're working out of closets. We need a new police station, and where would be the best place for that? What I really like about Signal Hill is that they have a community policing model. And I think that that's essential in this day and age. Whether it's school liaison officers, which the chief knows I'm very supportive of, whether it's having a police substation at Las Briesas, and that was, again, one of my kind of requirements when we rehabilitated Las Briesas, was to have a police substation there so that the officers could connect on the boots, you know, at ground level with the residents. I think continuing that kind of community policing is very important. We've been very responsive to things like our officer salaries. One of the things we heard was that there was problem retaining officers. So we did a study, and we were able to bring them in to a higher range so that we can stay competitive with the cities around us. Because one of the ways you keep a city safe is by having officers with longevity. And that's why having Chris Nunley as our police chief is so exciting because he started as an explorer. As a teenager, he started in our police department, and he worked his way up. And that's somebody that has longevity, that knows our history. The police department also is encouraged to continue to pursue grants for new equipment. And if... Am I... Do I have 30 seconds, or am I done? Oh, I still have 30 seconds. Okay. And as a council member, it's important to be responsive when they need something to know that we're here for them. I think when I first got on council, people thought, "I'm a prosecutor. I'm going to try to run the police department." I have never tried to run the police department. They can run themselves.
Thank you, Tina.
You can clap for me, too, if you want.
Okay, and we will start question number two with Chris Wilson. Almost, "With the city being more than 70% reliant on sales tax dollars for revenue, what other sources would you suggest be utilized to build the city's coffers?"
So, I think this is a really good question. And I really think that we need to reimagine the city of Signal Hill. We need to be able to look towards the future. You're right, 70% of the sales tax in the city is derived from people who buy things. And we want to make sure that we continue to be a good partnership with Signal Hill Chamber of Commerce. We want to make sure that we are a great partner with just knowing what type of rules and regulations are being handed down with regard to businesses. But it's also important to make sure that we continue to listen, that we go on some sort of listening tour, which is... That's one of the things I want to be able to go on as a council member in the first 100 days of my taking office. I want to be able to go to every business in Signal Hill and say, "Hey, you know, what do you need?" You know, what do you... Because we need to make sure that we continue to excite businesses to want to be able to relocate here. We can't have ghost towns here. We need to make sure that when people come to Signal Hill, they need to make sure that they're in Signal Hill and not just a community of Long Beach. So, one of my visions is to be able to be a great partner, but also bring my experience to the field, to be able to work with small businesses, to make sure that they have a... That they're... Continue to be excited to be here in Signal Hill. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tina?
So, this is an issue that has concerned the city council during all the years that I've been on the city council. And we have a lot of barriers to construction here because of the oil industry, because of the contamination. And so, we've consistently looked for ways to broaden our base. One of the things that we've done in the last, I want to say, eight or nine years, is open our doors to Edco. Edco is our trash company. They're the ones that come and pick up your trash. They're the ones that, when you forget to put your trash cans out someday, the trash truck driver actually stops his truck and brings your trash cans to the curb. So, if you don't know, Edco has a trash transfer station up in California. And what they do is they... The trucks go out from there, they bring the trash back, and then they sort it there. The thing about the trash transfer station is that other people can come and bring their trash there, too. And we get tipping fees. That's not sales tax. It's something that is completely independent of sales tax. And we all know that there will always be an industry with trash, and that is something that will continue to grow. Edco was so excited to be here, they actually moved their corporate headquarters here as well. They are very invested in our city. They also want to expand, and we are very much excited about that possibility. Additionally, we would very much like to expand our transitory occupancy tax, which would be a tax on hotels. And we are very hopeful that Vestor and Signal Hill Petroleum will be able together to build a development at Atlantic and Spring. They're in discussions now. And one of the big pieces of that will be some... Two hotels. They will service Memorial Hospital. They'll service that area. And that will be another way to diversify our revenue stream. And then we keep it business-friendly. We make sure people know where we are. We keep ourselves on the map for our existing businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, not only...
Wait, you gotta wait.
Timer.
Next time, we're doing the phone stopwatch.
Yes.
We could self-time.
I agree.
I'm ready. All right, well, not only are we sales tax dependent, so 70% of our revenue comes from sales tax, we're also very dependent on two sources. So, the Office Depot Distribution Center and our auto area. So, my goal would be to continue through creating a vision for the city to look for ways to diversify our revenue sources. So, looking at where we're going in the future with shopping, entertainment, restaurants, and then as we look to develop the remaining parcels that we have in Signal Hill, making sure that we're fully utilizing them for their potential. So, Mayor Hanson talked about the property on Spring Street adjacent to the hospital. It's a great site for a hotel and getting transient occupancy taxes. And also, creating entertainment venues that will utilize our restaurants and other specialty shopping facilities that will further diversify our tax base and make sure that if something happens to the sales tax revenue we enjoy today, we have a backup plan. And we're looking to the future when those specific industries are no longer as viable. So, I feel like the economic development plan, creating a master plan showing how we'd like to utilize those parcels, will help us as city residents also feel like we're more part of the plan, and we can really celebrate what we're doing. more part of the plan and we can really celebrate what we see coming. And incorporating things like green space, continuing the trail system, creating more parks, as we also look at these ways to continue economic development in the city.
Thank you. Okay, our third question will first go to Tina. What do we need in the way of new retail, restaurants, and services, and how do you suggest we attract those businesses?
Time? You already started it when she asked a question? Come on, Larry.
No.
Please.
Yeah, because that has to start when I'm finished with the question.
And can you repeat it while he's redoing it?
Sure.
Thank you.
What do we need in the way of new retail, restaurants, and services, and how do you suggest we attract those businesses?
I'm ready. Well, one thing that we've always wanted in Signal Hill is the small independent businesses. And, you know, we love the big box retailers and the auto mall because they bring in the bulk of our income. But what we've always wanted in the city is a culture where you feel like you don't have to go outside of Signal Hill for what you need. Where you can go to the market in Signal Hill, you can get gas in Signal Hill, you can get, go to Starbucks, though pretty much in any city you can go to Starbucks, but you can go to Starbucks in two places in Signal Hill. You can go to a nice restaurant where you have choices. And I think we can, need to continue to develop that. The thing is, in this day and age, it's very difficult for a standalone retail business to come into the city, especially if they have to start building from scratch. Because as I said, we have a lot of contamination, we don't have a lot, a lot of small pads. And that's why I think looking at projects such as Heritage Square on Cherry, which would bring together restaurants and retail and services for, you know, like a dry cleaner, a drugstore, things that we don't have yet. And also the Spring and Atlantic, which also would be a mix of commercial and retail and restaurants. I don't think that you can ever have too much of a variety. And I think that by making the city a place that remains safe, by making the city a place where the infrastructure is taken care of, where when you drive down the street, the streets are repaired, the sidewalks are repaired, it's visually beautiful, that's what lures in businesses. That's what lures in large development companies. They're not going to come to a city that doesn't have all of those pieces together. So, we want to continue to diversify our small business, our restaurant selection. And I think we're going to do that through these larger potential commercial retail businesses that are in the process of being developed right now.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat the question, Kier?
No, I'll just wait for the timer.
Okay, wait for the timer.
Right.
And then we're good.
Don't let him cheat you out of time.
We're ready?
He said he doesn't, he doesn't need me to read it again. Okay.
All right. Well, retail as we know it is evolving quickly. And we've seen the big box retail establishments that have been around like Sears continually going out of business. And so, the direction of retail is going to more of an experiential experience. It's all about the experience. And the places that we go do that is actually about a sense of place, where people want to go and feel like they belong. And so, what I see, creating our master plan for the city and our vision together, is that we want to create Signal Hill as a place that people want to be. We want to have experiences that they'll enjoy, they'll know us for those experiences. We want a signature event type of thing. And by creating that as a city, then we will attract the type of independent retailers, we'll get the restaurants we need. You know, we do just need basic services like more dry cleaners, hair places, drugstores. And through that, really creating that vision of the special place that Signal Hill is, we'll be able to be at the cutting edge of what we're looking to in the next 10, 20, 30 years as far as retail restaurants and those types of things go. Because we'll be creating the sense of place here in Signal Hill.
Thank you. Do you need me to repeat the question?
So, you know, our city runs through the 405 corridor. And we need to make sure that we continue to stimulate new opportunities in Signal Hill. That's, and that means creating a boutique corridor off of Spring Street, which is my, one of my visions of small businesses that includes an outdoor mall, a high-end movie theater, or even a hotel, is what Mayor Hanson mentioned. I'm also a big proponent of a drugstore in Signal Hill. We don't have one in the middle of Signal Hill. But the question is not whether cities should just provide incentives and subsidies to attract businesses, which should still be part of the conversation, but it should be also whether a city is diversifying its economic portfolio enough to address both a short-term and long-term outlook. We must all continue to renew ourselves as a city, both when our population is growing, but particularly when our population is in decline, to make sure that as spending habits and society changes, that we change along with it. And that's why I'm so happy to have the support of the LA County Federation of, I'm sorry, the LA County Business Federation, the only non-incumbent candidate to have that endorsement, because they see me as a job-friendly, business-friendly candidate. So, thank you.
Oh.
Thanks, Dave.
And question number four, and we'll be starting with Kier Jones. What do you think the city could do to further enhance the health and welfare of our residents?
So, we have a great community services department, and we really utilize a small amount of resources to do a lot of good. And we're going through a Parks and Recreation Master Plan study currently. And I feel like that is one of the best ways that we can help our residents, is continuing to increase access to parks. If it seems like residents would like a recreational facility, so we have embracing a more of an active lifestyle with a swimming pool or racket clubs or-- We were able to give pie in the sky ideas at the Master Plan Visioning Plan meetings. And so, I would say that my support of those types of activities, listening to residents on what we're lacking here to help with health and fitness, would be the best way to improve that in our city. And then utilizing our master plan as we go through, and we're looking to develop certain parcels to include those aspects that the residents would like to see to improve the life here, reduce pollution, increase green space, improve air quality, those types of things.
Thank you. Chris, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, thank you.
What do you think the city could do to further enhance the health and welfare of our residents?
Yeah. So, I agree a lot with what Kier Jones mentioned. I feel also that we need to take more of an aggressive approach, and that includes diversity of our park and recreational activities, having more of a diversity that speak to the 21st century economy, of having recreational activities that speak to that. Also, you know, work to maintain fast emergency response times as far as our public safety personnel, utilizing technology. I'm definitely a big proponent of technology and, you know, being able to make sure that we have free Wi-Fi in our parks, create industry attraction and job creation, making sure that we continue to have partnerships with our schools. Long Beach Unified School District, we have boroughs in the north side of Signal Hill, and, you know, it closed down during the recession, so it's a head start right now. But there's such a potential there. Making sure that we get people more excited, to be able to want to join community groups such as the Historical Society and the Signal Hill Chamber of Commerce. You know, there's an abundance of opportunity. Our youth is our future, and making sure that they connect with career technical programs. We have a great relationship with Long Beach City College. You know, I'm happy to be endorsed by the majority of the trustees there. I'm also happy to be endorsed by the majority of the Long Beach Unified School Board of Education there. I want to be able to create a synergy where we could take some of our students to the ports and have them go on a port tour. There's a, there's a, an abundance of history here in Signal Hill. You know, we need to connect them with the Signal Hill Historical Society. Maybe up on the hill, create some sort of nature preservancy or nature walks, and then folks are very excited about the things that Signal Hill has to offer. So, there's a lot of visions that I have, but I just want to make sure that I'm also listening to the residents, because I can't be the one that just dictates it all. I want to be able to be a good listener as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tina, would you like me to repeat the question?
I'm good. I'm ready. I think the first place you have to start to increase the health and welfare of your residents is providing safe housing and affordable housing. And I think our city has done a fantastic job of that with our workforce housing, Las Briesas 1, Las Briesas 2, Zinnia. I think our city has done a fantastic job of using our tax dollars to subsidize after-school programs and camps for kids who otherwise might be at home by themselves. We never want to know or think that a kid is home by themselves. I think that we've done a great job with our active adults, as we call them, and the programs and excursions. But can we do more? We can absolutely do more. And that's one of the reasons why I'm so excited about the library. Not only is the library going to increase in size, but the library's going to have a history room, which I also hope will be used as a senior lounge. It'll have a teen center. I think we need to increase our programming for all of our age groups, give them more choices. I'd really like to see a city shuttle that can bring in housebound seniors. My dad's lived with me for five years now, and over that time, he's had to stop driving. So, I've really seen that dynamic and what it's like for him to not be able to go out and socialize as he would like to. One thing that, after going to the Cambodian event at the May Center on Sunday, regarding the May Center Sunday night, I really thought to myself, "We have such a beautiful and rich variety of cultures in Signal Hill." I would really like to see our library do exhibits, do events that have to do with the different cultures, and bring those cultures in to help us design and create those events. I think that by having our trail system, which is free, our exercise stations, and we have them on the north side as well as at the top of the hill, that is free fitness that every family can go out and enjoy. I think just continue to develop those things, starting, as I said, from housing and working all the way up, will make sure that all of our residents are safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final question, we'll start with Mr. Wilson, is when it comes to recreation for our residents, in what areas are we lacking, and how can those matters be addressed?
You know, one of the thing--
Wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. So, one of the things that I really want to champion, and I really want to make sure that we take advantage of, since we just have so many here in the city, is our gyms and our fitness centers. You know, allowing for us to have, I know that we used to have, and we probably still do, but as far as some sort of health and fitness event, where we allow for people to come out to the hill and, you know, take advantage of some of the amazing views that we have. Our seniors should also be more engaged. So, that's why, that's why what I mean about diversifying our recreational activities, it's not just a status quo. We can't expect to just govern by a status quo model. We need to be able, our residents don't deserve status quo. And I want to be able to be a champion that says, you know, "Let's make sure that we bring residents out to be able to take more advantage of health and wellness centers and, you know, create more fitness centers that are more senior-friendly and to make sure that our youth are also involved too." You know, I can't tell you of how many times that I see a lot of our students, and I've actually talked to some of our students here in Signal Hill, and they want to be able to see more recreational centers here in the city. And I want to be able to be that person that is that voice for those who want, want to definitely see that for the city. So, thank you.
Tina, would you like me to repeat the question?
I would, please. Thank you.
When it comes to recreation for our residents, in what areas are we lacking, and how can those matters be addressed?
Okay, thank you. I think we have a lot of great recreation services. I talked about some of them before. I think our after-school programs and our camps. I think that the fact that we have a trail system, you can walk out of your house and you can get on it and work together as a family, have fitness as a family, is fantastic. But I still, as I talked about earlier, I still think that there's people we're not reaching, whether it's our seniors that can't get out of the house themselves, whether it's the families that are so busy just with their day-to-day activities that they don't know what we have to offer, whether it's people from a different culture who don't feel like we are meeting their needs, they don't feel welcome. Those are the things that I really feel like we have to do better. I'm very grateful to the Community Foundation for being a resource for fundraising, because, you know, there have been times during the recession when we've really looked at ourselves as a city and said, "Can we afford concerts in the park? Can we afford, you know, the Halloween carnival, the Spring Fest?" And it's important to do those things, because it's important to bring families together and give them somewhere safe where they can celebrate. I think that the library, as I said, is going to add a lot of programming options for us. But I think that this process going through Park and Rec Master Plan will give us ideas maybe we haven't even thought of. One thing that I've actually become kind of excited about, and staff will probably roll their eyes when I say this, but is repurposing Spud Field. I really think that that is something that we should be looking at. Now, during all the rains, it was actually a duck pond, and so it would take a lot of money drainage-wise. But the thought of repurposing that to an athletic field, something that Long Beach wanted to do, and they just weren't able to do, to me is a really exciting prospect. And I still have a dream that we will get a nature preserve on the north side of the hill. We've worked with Santa Monica Conservancy in the past, looking for grant funding, but I don't think we should stop doing that. And I think that we should diversify even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Kier, would you like me to repeat the question?
I'm good. Ready. Well, like I mentioned, I've been attending the Parks and Recreation Master Plan meetings. And as they're getting feedback from residents, what I'm hearing is that people are really looking for a place to connect, whatever group they're in. If they're a teenager, they're looking for a place to hang out with other teenagers. Our seniors are looking for a place to be with other seniors and do activities and do sporting things, but mainly so they meet the other people in our neighborhood. And so, I feel like that's our greatest thing that we're lacking. And we'll soon have the community center back, once the library moves into its new beautiful facility. And so, we'll have those two resources back. So, potentially, we could look at a recreation center in the future to help fulfill those needs. And then visually, I feel another thing, we have these great trails, but they're not connected. And so, the other feedback that we received was perhaps the city should become known for this great web of trails or bike paths and multimodal transportation, so that you can connect the north neighborhood all the way down to the south. And we can really participate in each other's neighborhoods and see each other on the trails and become one city. And it would really be a very special thing, unlike anything else we have in Southern California. So, I feel that connectivity is lacking, and we do have some opportunities in the future to really bring our city together, both physically and visually, and really come together so that we can have our groups of people in Signal Hill doing these things that we enjoy, instead of leaving the city. So, I think my time's up. It's very difficult to tell, because it hasn't beeped, but the thing went down like 30 seconds ago, so, thank you.
Okay, we now have two minutes for closing remarks. And if we keep with the same order that we've been, Tina, you would be starting.
Okay. Let me know when it's started. You have to let me know, Larry. Like, we're getting a flag that you would-- Okay. You'd like a flag that you like, you know, like, "Off to the races." Right.
Bear with me.
I'm bearing. Thank you. Chris, I did want to correct one thing. If you were talking about the Los Angeles-- Thank you. Chris, I did want to correct one thing. If you were talking about the Los Angeles County Biz PAC, Business Federation, I do have their endorsement as well.
No, I said non-incumbent.
Oh, okay. Well, I do have their endorsement as well. During my opening statement, I talked about all of the things that have happened in the city during my years on the city council. Each time my term comes up for reelection, I ask myself if I still have ideas and a viewpoint that is needed on the city council. And so far, the answer has been yes. And so, I run for reelection. I remain energized and full of ideas for a next term. As I said, I'd like to see a city shuttle, bring in residents who can't otherwise drive out to events. I'd also like to see a shuttle take visitors to points of interest around our city, so that people know about our city and come back to shop and eat. I'd like to see the repurposing of Spud Field. I'm very intrigued by that, and I began to really think about that by attending the Park and Rec Visioning Meetings. I've asked staff to look for another site for another workforce housing development, because we can never have enough housing for our residents. I'm watching, along with the community, as Signal Hill Petroleum works on their plan for Heritage Square. I'm hopeful that Vestar and Signal Hill Petroleum will move forward with a retail and restaurant and hotel complex on Atlantic and Spring. And they also have hopes and plans for a movie theater. And I remember first being on the council and thinking, wouldn't it be great to have a movie theater? And that is something that could still happen. I'm excited about the potential for programming for seniors in our new library and for bringing in cultural events that highlight our many cultures. If you like the progress that's been made in the city, then I'm going to ask for you to vote for me. If you moved into the city because you loved what we do, I'll ask you to vote for me. This is a position where experience really does matter, and that's why I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Kier?
Thank you very much for your time. And I think time is very important, spending with people. And so, I wanted to share with you what I've spent my time doing in the last 24 months. I've attended all but two city council meetings. I've been to Historical Society meetings. I've talked to the friends of the Signal Hill Library. I've been an active member of the Chamber of Commerce. I've attended volunteer recognition, senior lunches, tree lightings, ribbon cuttings. I have attended planning commission meetings. I have gone outside of Signal Hill and visited Sacramento. I've attended the League of California Cities meetings. I've attended City Clerk New Law meetings. And why this is important is that you need somebody that will represent you both in Signal Hill and outside, but most of all, that's listening to all of the residents at these events, and taking the information that they learn and bringing it back to council and making educated decisions for you. And that's what I want to share with you, that you can call me anytime. My number's 562-986-9813. I'm out talking to residents every day until Election Day, but I'm going to be thereafter. I'm going to be in the organizations that you're involved in and that you care about and that we want to protect. I'm focused on the future. I want to make sure that we have revenue to keep the city strong and beautiful and a place we can be proud of. And so, I want to use those special places that we have left in the city to do really remarkable things. I want to make sure that the North Slope is a special nature preserve that we can all enjoy for years to come. I want to make sure that we connect the north to the south with trails and ways that we can all be better equipped to enjoy life every day together, so that we can do it in our neighborhood, closer home, that we're not driving. And that we can spend more time in local eateries and restaurants and shops, because we created a plan that we all have bought in together, that we can celebrate together, and that, most of all, that we can all say, I love Signal Hill. So, remember to vote Kier Jones on March 5th.
Thank you. Chris Wilson?
I want to thank the Signal Tribune and the residents and everyone else watching this segment for your participation. Thank you so much. I'm honored to be here with both Kier and Mayor Hanson. Thank you so much. I also want to thank our moderator and timekeeper for doing a great job. Public service is in my blood, folks. Dr. Cornell West said, you must love the people that you serve and serve the people that you love. I'm proud of where we are today. I'm proud to have sat down with so many groups in the city to learn about their concerns and how we can make our city better. I'm running to, I'm running to represent people like Gabriel from the north side, who talked to me about how we need, how we need to further increase dialogue between our partners in law enforcement and the community. I'm running to represent people like Joey from Crescent Heights, who wants to make sure his concerns are heard regarding a project in the city. I'm running to represent people like David, who lives on the hill, who is concerned about public safety and maintain their property value. I'm running to represent people like Danny, who is a resident of Signal Hill but is also a teacher, and he wants to make sure our youth are knowledgeable of our city's past. I'm running to represent everyone in the city, not just a select few. The way I see it is that we're all in together sounds a lot better than you're on your own. This is an important election. We have some great candidates, and I respect them both. Running to earn your vote on the city council, and of course, I respect each of them, but this is not about us. This is not about me. This is about the health and the future of our great city, and there's only one person here that represents the future of our city, and that's me. And I ask for your vote on March 5th for city council. Thank you.
Well, it looks like we are running a little early. So, that means that we will have time, if there are candidates who would like to ask one question of one other candidate, and that candidate will have three minutes to answer. And if we continue in the order in which we have been doing, it would go Kier, Chris, and Tina. So, Kier, do you have a question that you would like to ask? And that would be a three-minute answer. Do you have a question that you would like to ask of one of the other candidates?
Can I ask a couple clarifying questions?
Certainly.
Two minutes or three minutes?
Three.
Three minutes? A long time. And I think we talked about that the other candidates could answer if they wanted, since we have so much time. And the person that asks the question answered as well if they choose to? If everybody agrees with that? If they want to?
Okay, we're going to ask. That wasn't part of the plan, because we wanted to give time for you folks to ask one another. You can certainly hang around after or stay after and.
I will yield my question to a member of the audience if they would like to ask a question.
This is unexpected. Hi, I'm Joe Holliday, and I'm representing the Crescent Heights street neighborhood. We have the Crescent Heights Historic District and the Crescent Square Development, of which 10% of the audience is part of that. But we have what we think is the most controversial proposal in the city this year, and that is the proposal for the Heritage Square, the residential half of it. And so, what we would like to ask you is, how do you feel about public land being given to a private corporation to make profit for that corporation when it is against the express wishes of 100% of every single person that lives within four blocks of the proposal?
And who is that question addressed to?
Oh, oh, do I direct it to one person?
Certainly.
Okay, great. I'm looking forward to all, everybody answering. So, I, Tina, maybe?
Well, you're talking about Heritage Square, which is a project that's proposed by Signal Hill Development. And let me start by saying this, there's still no project. There's a project concept, and Signal Hill Petroleum has a conception, if you will, but there's still no project. And until there is a project, until they've made a final decision about what they're going to do about the housing element, until it's been fully vetted by the planning commission, until it's been fully vetted through workshops, there is still, it's still in its infancy, if you will. One thing that I can tell the residents, and I'll say this tonight, and I'll say this when I meet with the Crescent Square residents, is that I would love to have a Signal Hill center, and I think everybody in this room would love to have a Signal Hill center. I don't think anybody disagrees with that. But I'm not going to vote for a project just to have a Signal Hill center. That's one commitment I can make, absolutely. If it doesn't make sense on all levels, if it doesn't make sense financially, if it's a gift of public funds, if it's something that the city isn't allowed to do, if it doesn't make sense because of environmental concerns or traffic or the surrounding communities, I'm not going to vote in favor of a project just to have a community center. Even though we all want that, it would be lovely, you know, I'm not going to do that. And I think if, you know, and you said once to me, Joe, and I'll direct it to you, you once told me that I was the resident's hope on the council, because out of the sitting council, you felt like I was the person that really listened to residents. And I think about the project up on Temple where I think townhomes were proposed. The developer wanted to do a variance. It would have impacted so many views of our neighbors. And I was the first council person to say, I am not in favor of this. I'm not going to let that happen. And that, and the fact that you said it to me really meant a lot, because if that's the reputation I have, then that's the reputation that I want you to know you can trust, you can trust me in. I will continue to do what is best for the entire city. I don't sit up here with a personal agenda. I really sit up here, my slogan has been "public service, not politics," since my very first campaign. I also live a life of public service as a prosecutor, and I will not do anything that isn't good for the entire city. I can promise you that.
Chris, do you have a question of one of the other candidates?
I do not, no.
Okay. And Tina, do you have a question of one of the other candidates?
No, I will yield mine as well if there's another. I do have a question, but I would like to open it up to the audience if there's another question, and if not, I do. Great.
Good evening, everybody. Can each candidate?
No.
Or can a candidate, I'll pick one maybe, give us their opinion on allowing medical and/or recreational marijuana dispensaries in Signal Hill?
And who would you like that directed to?
Meeny, meeny, miny, moe. How about it?
How about it, Kern?
All right. Well, thank you. Well, the voters of Signal Hill actually addressed this two years ago. So, we had a measure on the ballot, and the voters decided that we weren't ready for it in Signal Hill. And so, that's my position as well. It's really that simple. Let's do what the voters want.
Well, boy, y'all made that easy, and thank you for being patient with us. We felt the group here who put this on and asked, came up with the questions, it was a really difficult kind of a deal, because we didn't see anyone else coming forward to put this together. As long as I've lived here, we've always had forums, one or two or three, and this was going to be the first time that, in my memory, that we weren't going to. So, it may not be perfect, the way that we did things, but I will tell you, it was done with heart, and we worked very, very hard to keep questions open and to make them fair. And I thank each one of you for coming and for being so candid, and I'm not going to cry, but I, I might, but I, yeah, I am. But I really do appreciate you folks for taking the time and for running, because, boy, that's something I don't know if I'd ever want to do. But bless your hearts. So, thank you so much. And if you would, please stay and speak to your. So, there we go. And there's coffee and cookies, so.
Thank you, Nina. We really appreciate it. And this is really what makes Signal Hill so special, is that we take the time, we're engaged, we all talk, and I'm sure we'll all be here for a while afterward. So, please come talk to us, because that's what it's all about, listening to you and making change. Thank you.
Thank you.